Good morning. It's 9:00 a.m. and I will call to order the September 9th meeting of the Slayne County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Grievous?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Wiese?
Here.
Commissioner Hay?
Here.
If you're able to stand, please do so and join me in the flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we will move into our citizens' input portion of the meeting where members of the public may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that will not be discussed on today's agenda. Is there anyone that'd like to speak?
Good morning.
Slayne, Kansas. I wanted to invite you commissioners and the public to the Granny Brigade's September meeting, which is Tuesday, September the 16th, at 6:30 at the Knights at Columbus Hall at 115 North 10th. And we will be conducting a candidate forum for the city commissioners and the school board. And all of our commissioners that are running, are attending, and all of our school board members that are running are attending. So again, it'll be next week, Tuesday evening, 6:30, and we'll start with the school board. And there'll be time for question and answering from the public. Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
Anyone else like to speak? Okay. At this time, we'll move on to our consent agenda, which consists of approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, approval of public forum agenda, approval of payroll, the 2026 amendment to the 2024-2026 Employees Work Agreement, approval of county commission minutes September 2nd, 2025, and the approval of county commission minutes, a study session on September 2nd. Are there any commissioners who wish to add or delete any items from the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. Will we approve the consent agenda as written?
I second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the public hearing. Clerk?
Revenue neutral rate hearing for Slayne County for the 2026 budget with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning, commissioners. So for the 2026 budget, the county has proposed to exceed the revenue neutral rate. The revenue neutral rate is the amount of mills that would generate the same dollar amount of property tax revenue as the previous year with the new valuation. It's a little complicated, but it's a calculation that the county clerk performs and sends out to all jurisdictions. Jurisdictions that feel that they need to collect more in revenue are required to have a revenue neutral rate hearing and adopt a resolution. So the revenue neutral rate for Slayne County for 2026 was calculated at 39.023 mills. The proposed budget is at 40.167 mills. So I would ask that the commission open the public hearing and hear from the public, then close the public hearing, and if you are so inclined, adopt the resolution.
Okay. I will open the public hearing on the revenue neutral rate hearing for Slayne County 2026 budget. Does any member of the public wish to speak? Okay. Please state your name and address.
Anita Chase at the Representative Land Institute, Slayna. Just wanting to see if there's some information on what the, I'm sure it's public, but where the increases are coming from, and then also are you anticipating further increases for both property with houses and undeveloped land over the next few years, or is that just something that's, like I said, first time I've attended, so I'm not sure how this works, but...
Okay. I would have to turn that over to the administrator.
Just go sit back.
No, you stay. See if he can answer that.
So the increases are occurring in a number of different places. One of the big cost drivers is raises for county employees for next year. The mill levy is applied to all classes of property. The way it works, residential property is valued, and then it's multiplied by 11 and 1/2 percent, and then divided by 1,000, and the mill levies applied. For vacant lots, they're valued, it's multiplied by 25 percent, divided by 1,000, a levy applied. For ag, it's a little bit different because ag is based on a use value rather than a fair market value. So there's a rolling average that's applied for that property, but the mill levy does affect all classes of property.
And are we anticipating that they'll be continuing raises over the next few years, or is, like I said, is that something that have to just kind of see as you go?
I would say it's a year-to-year thing. You know, based on the needs of the county to expend funds is determined by the commission and then the valuation. If we have large valuation increases, that tends to keep the mill levy lower. If we have pretty small mill levy, or pretty small valuation increases, the mill levy could increase depending on how much the commission wishes to expend in the succeeding year.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Yes. Anyone else from the public wish to speak?
Good morning. Tom Pestinger, 5113 East North Street. One thing I would really like for you to think about is, I know we buy new equipment and everything, graders and everything, and I know I've talked to several of you several times about the amount of times they grade our road on North Street. You'd think I'd be just the opposite, asking it to grade it more, but I'm really asking it to grade it less. I have talked to the grader, and he said it's on their agenda to grade every two weeks, and I think that's a little bit excessive. We do have a very good road, and thank you for that road. I appreciate it. But if we could, I think you could save a lot of money if you would maybe do it 12 times a year instead of 24. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. I will now request a motion and a second vote on the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Resolution 25-2434 as presented.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 25-2434 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next?
Actually, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
That one needs, that one and the next one need to be by roll call. That should have been in your notes. So I'll need the clerk to go through and ask each of you individually for your votes.
I apologize. It does say that here. Mr. Administrator, I'm sorry.
All right. Commissioner Sparks?
Yeah.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Grievous?
Aye.
Commissioner Wiese?
Aye.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item. I apologize.
The revenue neutral rate hearing for Rural Fire Districts 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 7 with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
So this is the same thing that we just went through for the county, but this is for six of the seven fire districts for which the Board of County Commissioners is the governing body and sets the mill levies. So Fire District Number 6 is not exceeding the revenue neutral rate, but the other districts are proposing to exceed the revenue neutral rate. So for Rural Fire District Number 1, the revenue neutral rate was 3.909 mills, and the proposed budget is at 3.997 mills. For Rural Fire District Number 2, the revenue neutral rate was 6.012 mills, and the proposed budget is at 6.047 mills. For Rural Fire District Number 3, the RNR was at 5.143, and the proposed budget is at 5.438. For Rural District Number 4, which of course is the South Industrial Area covered by the city of Slayna, the revenue neutral rate was at 19.743, and the budget is at 21.860. For Rural Fire District Number 5, the revenue neutral rate was at 5.121, and the budget is at 5.562. And for Rural Fire District Number 7, the revenue neutral rate was at 4.808, and the proposed budget is at 4.969 mills. The fire districts, just to answer some of the questions that were raised earlier, the fire districts do not typically have staffing needs, so most of their increases are driven by equipment needs. I will say there are a couple of instances where they're actually not collecting any more money for '26 than they did for '25, but it just, the way the, the way the valuation's calculated, it's an increase because the valuation went down. So I think that's true for at least one, maybe two of the districts. So with that, I would ask that the commission open the public hearing, take public comment, close the public hearing, and then if you're so inclined, adopt the resolution again by roll call vote. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, the public hearing. I will open up the public hearing on the revenue rate for Rural Fire Districts 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 7. Does any members of the public wish to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. I will now request a motion and a second vote on resolution.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt Resolution 25-2435 as presented.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Grievous?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Commissioner Wiese?
Aye.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item?
Public hearing on Slayne County and Special District budgets for 2026 with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
So this is the actual hearing on the budget. Now that we've gotten through talking about the mill levy, let's talk about the actual county budget. So the proposed county budget for 2026 will allow Slayne County to expend $73,566,347, and will allow the special districts, which include the seven Rural Fire Districts, Fallen and Kip, to expend an additional $1,217,677. Included in your packet for today was some information about changes for next year, and, you know, also how the mill levies are typically divided, and where we get money and spend money and all those sorts of things. This is obviously something that we've had quite a bit of discussion on since May, but I'd be happy to answer any questions for the commissioners, and then would recommend that you, again, open the public hearing, take public comment, and close the public hearing. This one does not require a vote.
Okay. I will open the public hearing on Slayne County and Special District budgets for 2026. Does any members of the public wish to speak? Okay. You sure? Okay. Hearing none, I will now close the public hearing. No action is required. Okay. Next item?
Public hearing on Ottawa Road Resolution with Darren Fisher, Rodenbridge Administrator.
Good morning, Darren.
Morning.
Good morning, commissioners. On July 1st, 2025, the Slayne County Board of Commissioners adopted Resolution 25-2430. This resolution was a petition by property owners Thomas Pestinger and Marion Woody. They requested the commission to declare Ottawa Road between Fqueak Road and McGovern Road to be a minimum maintenance road with gated controlled access. On August 26, 2025, the Slayne County Planning Board recommended approval of the Ottawa Road classification changed. It was then published in the official Slayne County publication designated September 9th, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. in Room 107, a public hearing to take place for the commission to receive public testimony in support or in opposition of the proposed request. Property owners are responsible for installation of the gates. The alternatives for action are to confirm the limits of the resolution as described, two, adjust the limits of the resolution. Staff recommends confirming the limits of the resolution. The budget impact is minimal if not offsetting.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will open the public hearing on Ottawa Road Resolution 2025-134. Does any members of the public wish to speak?
Tom Pestinger, 5113 East North Street. I'd appreciate if we closed that road just to stop the riffraff that goes on there. I don't know if you understand, the bridge is out, so you can't get this through the road anyway, and then every time we go out to do something, there's a lot of mess. So I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else like to speak? I will now close the public hearing. We have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. Will we approve RFA, where am I at here, Resolution 2025-134? Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve Road Resolution 2025-134. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next?
Public hearing on Ottawa Road Resolution with Darren Fisher, Rodenbridge Administrator.
Good morning.
Niles.
Niles.
Oh, Niles, I'm sorry.
On July 1st, 2025, the Slayne County Board of Commissioners adopted Resolution 25-2429. The resolution was a petition by property owners William Crawford, Sean Corb, and Lisa Green. They requested the commission to declare a portion of Niles Road to be a minimum maintenance road with gated controlled access. On August 26, 2025, the Slayne County Planning Board recommended approval of the Niles Road classification change. It was then published in the official Slayne County publication designating September 9th, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. in Room 107, a public hearing to take place for the commission to receive public testimony in support of or in opposition to the proposed request. Property owners are responsible for installation of the gates. The alternatives for action are to confirm the limits of the resolution as described, two, adjust the limits of the resolution. Staff recommends confirming the limits of the resolution.
Okay. I will open up the public hearing on Niles Road Resolution 2025-135. Does any members of the public wish to speak? I will now close the public hearing. Motion and vote on RFA.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we approve RFA 2025-135 as presented.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2025-135. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll now move into action items?
Adoption of 2026 budgets for Slayne County and Special Districts with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Good morning. Good morning. Again, I know you haven't had enough budget talk, so let's do it one more time. So this would be the request for the action to actually approve the proposed budgets for the county and the special districts. We did earlier today have the required public hearing, as well as the commission adopted resolutions to exceed the revenue neutral rates for the county and six of the seven Rural Fire Districts. I would like to again thank our department heads for their assistance in preparing the budget for 2026, and I would be happy to answer any questions the commission may have. I would recommend approval.
Okay. Any other comments or questions about the commission?
I'd like to, I'd like to thank the staff too for what they went through to, to help get this budget where it was manageable. I'd like the public to know that, you know, we worked really hard on this budget this year to really get, get a lot of these stuff done and taken care of, even though we did exceed the RNR, we were still able to take care of the county needs, and we still were able to take care of some of the other needs of the, of our citizens. But it was, it was a hard process this year, and all five of the commissioners and the, and staff and everything really worked hard, and I think I'm really proud of them for what we did. And hopefully next year, we can, we can do the same thing and, and keep trying to keep the, you know, taxes down and make it a whole lot more tolerable for the, for the citizens of Slayne County. So thank you.
I just want to say, this was my first year of doing that, and it, it's bitter and hard. I thank not only the staff, well, Phil, for his patience and guidance and really working us through the process and allowing us to meet several times on the budget. I don't know how many times. I want to say 10,000, but I know it was more like four or five. But met a lot. But department heads removed things from their budgets, department heads gave up different things, and I appreciate that, and I know that's not easy. There was real good appeals and needs that some were met, some were not, and I hope that we can meet those needs at another time. But I also want to thank the commissioners. Everyone was civil, no one talked over each other, everyone was very honest, and what an opportunity for my first time to have it that way. And it was, I'm not going to use the word enjoyable, but pleasant. So thank you.
I'd like to say that all in all, I was quite pleased with the outcome of the budget. But one thing I am committed to is we were unable to meet the needs of HR as far as their staffing. And as soon as there's some flexibility in the 2026 budget, I would, I would push hard to see that happen.
And I would also support that. When I mentioned the appeal, there, HR is the one that did not, and she graciously pulled back, and I know that wasn't easy, but I agree with that. If there's money in '26, we need to support that position.
And I want to just thank everyone here because it has been one of those, the job that our administrator has put together and his, your staff, it's, it's been a pleasure again to go through this budget. It's because, and one of the things I want to do, this 2026 budget and brief that your staff put together, is this on the, our webpage? Okay.
It was both an attachment to today's agenda, and it's also... It, it was both an attachment to today's agenda and it's also in the budget folder. We typically do some printed copies for the commissioners as well, so you will have a few to take with you if you go to various community meetings, so.
And that's what I, this is one of those things that I get asked quite often is, is this information right here, and this is very important to the public. So thank you. It's been a great deal. Any other comments by the public?
Anita Chase, Salina. I was just wondering, is that something that is available to the public or I, you were, were you saying it's on the website?
Yeah, it's on our website, I guess. Yes, it is out there.
Yes, and we can certainly get you a printed copy as well if you'd like.
That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you just stop in room 209 upstairs, they can hook you up.
Thank you.
Any other comments by the public? Anyone else? I will bring it back to the commission for discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2025-127 as presented.
I'll sec, I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve RFA 2025-127 as presented. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item.
Opioid Agreement with the City of Salina with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
So, beginning in the 1990s, there's a new class of drugs introduced to fight pain that people had from surgeries and various other things. Synthetic opiate derivatives, most commonly known as opioids. And the prescribing of those was sort of heavily marketed to doctors, created an epidemic of addiction around the country, not as much here locally, but in many parts of the country, and certainly some effects here as well. As a result of that, a number of different cities, counties, and states launched lawsuits against the manufacturers and distributors of opioid products. Celine County nor the City of Salina launched a lawsuit, but when those lawsuits started to settle, states, particularly state attorneys general, entered into agreements with the opioid manufacturers and then with cities and counties in their various states. So a few years ago, I think it was in '21, the state legislature passed the Kansas Fights Addictions Act, which is, sets up the framework for the opioid settlement monies that come into the state of Kansas. And basically what it does is it puts this in the responsibility realm of the attorney general, and when settlement monies come in, the state keeps 75% of it, and then they have a grant program that they dole that back out to folks who do treatment and education, et cetera, prevention. And the other 25% is then split evenly between counties and cities and then distributed between the counties and the cities based roughly on population. So the upshot of that is that between Celine County and the City of Salina, over the course of this settlement period, which is estimated to, you know, it started in 2022, is estimated to go through at least 2038. Over the course of that, the county and the city will receive from that, you know, share of the 25% of the settlements, over a million dollars. The agreements between the county and the attorney general and the city and the attorney general require that that funding be spent specifically on fighting drug addiction, not just opioids, but, you know, prevention, education, treatment, et cetera, around drug addiction. So we've had those funds for a couple of years. We've spent some on Narcan, which is a shot that people can take to prevent death from overdoses. We've spent some of it on public reporting, the opioid dashboard. We've spent some of it on a study with WSU to determine the local needs around opioids, the opioid needs assessment. And the current proposal is that we combine our forces, and more importantly, our money, with the City of Salina, and that the county administer a grant program that would dole out essentially $50,000 a year in grant funding to local nonprofits who were active in the drug prevention and treatment arena each year between now and 2038. The City of Salina would keep, they, they would contribute 35,000 to that $50,000 grant pot, and then they would keep about 20,000, and they would use that internally for law enforcement, education, other prevention efforts. And the county, we would contribute 15,000 to match the city's 35 for that total of 50,000 for the grants. And then we would also have 15,000 for law enforcement needs and 15,000 for administering the program and, and doing the public relations and all that sort of thing. So cities and county, local jurisdictions that receive Kansas Fights Addictions Act funding are permitted under the terms of the act and the agreements with the attorney general to enter into joint agreements for expenditure of the funds. So this is not an inter-local agreement per se. This is a joint agreement under the auspices of, of the, the legislation. So the City of Salina, last night, the city commission approved this agreement, and so the ask here today is that your commission also approve the agreement. If you do, the first thing that would happen is that we would begin taking applications for folks to serve on an opioid grants review committee. So if you pass the agreement today, I would ask that you start thinking of folks who might be interested in serving on that committee. It would be a committee of seven folks, four appointed by the city and three appointed by us, who would review the applications, make recommendations. We're hoping to get applications in by late October, early November, review those applications with that committee, and be in front of you again in December to actually make the awards, and they would start January 1 of '26. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about that, but this is the agreement that's before you today for approval.
Okay, any comments from the commission?
Just for clarification, the county will be the lead on this. If they come with recommendations of how to spend that 50,000, does that go in front of the city and the county or just come to the county?
Per the agreement, it's just the county commission that would enter into those agreements and then the, with the grantees. So we would award the funds, we would bill the city for their share.
Thank you.
So I have a few questions. One, did you not learn your lesson with ARPA? That's all I want to say about that little thing.
That's a great and funny question, Commissioner Grievous. So I will say this is significantly less money than, than the American Rescue Plan Act. This is, you know, the county and the city already receive alcohol funds on an annual basis. We receive a tiny amount of those funds. It's about 40,000, 50,000 in total. It has to be divided into three different pots. So we award around $20,000 a year in funding from that alcohol. It's actually derived from the, the liquor tax that people pay. And so we have a process that we've done for a number of years. This, I would say, is more similar to that than to ARPA.
Well, okay, that's good to know, but I'm still impressed that our administration office is going to take that on again because I watched a lot of those other meetings and that, those were brutal. But I like the county and the city working together and doing this. I think you not only get more get bang for your buck, but you're able to get the information out as a unit and not. So the information about the 50,000 annually and the requirements to meet the application will go out to all the nonprofits that serve this purpose, because a lot of nonprofits do just that, but a lot of other nonprofits do, and I, maybe it's not just nonprofits, I don't know, but a lot of other agencies do portions of that.
Yes, so the publicity, if you approve the agreement today, the publicity will start going out pretty immediately. I think we've got things set up for this Friday to start trying to get people to serve on the grants review committee and then trying to get, you know, folks who might be interested in the funding.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, one thing I, I really hope that comes out of this whole thing is, and I brought it up many times, I mean Jason's talked about the opioid, but more access to Narcan. I, I feel that the City of Salina does not have enough access for the public out there for Narcan where they can obtain it in case of an emergency. So I'm hoping maybe that in this long run of, you know, some of this settlement money, that we were able to get more access out there to the, to the public for, for Narcan. So other than that, I think it's a great deal and look forward to the.
Okay. Anyone from the public could wish to speak? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the commission for discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We approve RFA 2025-125 as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve RFA 2025-125 as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next.
Commissioners' comments?
I don't have any. Okay, next.
Announcements?
I did just want to announce that next Tuesday will be a study session. We'll be right next door in 107B, and the topic, don't get too excited, we'll be talking about property and liability insurance. So sure to be scintillating. But we will be back here in two weeks on the 23rd for a regular meeting.
Okay. Seeing nothing. Next on the agenda is executive session.
If there's no other business this morning, staff would request that the commission recess to executive session under the property acquisition exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act to discuss potential acquisition of real property for five minutes and reconvene in this room at 9:45 a.m.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to attend executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.